I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up we have the consent agenda through the minutes and council meeting in October 3rd. Room pay ordinance number seven ninety-three.
I have a comment about the minutes I would like to ask about. In this section, under new business B, what we are considering amendment to the city codes. It has in here that the developer would like this council to consider an amendment to the economic incentive and excess tax policy. And I don't know if that's quite the way I would say that. I think it was more, we knew he was going to come to us asking for a, some help, but I think it was either the EDC or the council or Mike's idea that we changed that part of it. I don't know. I guess I would definitely kind of-
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, I don't know, I don't remember what was actually said during the meeting, but I think that's a fair representation of how the discussion started is that we had this dialogue about the excise tax. Maybe want to do something about it. And as a result of our discussion with the EDC, we thought this is, this is a good idea to just put it under the umbrella of the incentive package. And then, of course, we wanted to be during that discussion very transparent that Mr. Parr intends to make an application. So I would agree with the tone of the discussion definitely wasn't that, oh, Don Parr had this idea, let's do this.
Right.
It was more of him coming to us with, I would like help. And we came up with the idea of, okay.
Yeah.
Or you did.
That's right.
Of how to help. And I just didn't quite like the way that was in there. So I don't know how we go about changing it from there. Or if we need to, but just wanted to kind of add on to that.
Want to make a change on that?
Change. Well, you could change it to say Administrator Brungart asked the city council to consider an amendment to the economic incentive tax policy.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be comfortable with that.
That would be what I kind of would see as much like. Now, I don't mind Don Parr's name being in there, but I don't think it was, I don't like the way that reads there. Because I don't think that was really, you know, him coming up with that idea.
True. He wasn't definitely here asking.
Right.
He shouldn't get credit for doing a deal like that.
So will we make a motion to change that wording?
Yeah, if you want to make a motion.
Well, I would move we change the wording in line one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven of paragraph B to state Administrator Brungart asked the council to consider an amendment to the economic incentive and excise tax policy.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion? We'll call.
Hold it just one second. Lane?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Now I'd make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with the minutes as modified.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, Lane, second. Any further discussion? We'll call.
Ritter?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carried.
Next up, it's called public. Members of the public wanting to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on this agenda. The comments that are discussed on the call public may or may not be echoed by the council during the meeting. There's a four-minute time limit. Please stand if you recognize your station name and address. Do I have anybody in the call public? All right. Seeing none, we'll close that and move on to whole business. We add now new business. Item four A, consider economic incentive request from Don Parr for the Arbor Ridge development.
Yes, council. This was a topic that we knew was coming. And Don's here tonight. He's asked if it's okay with the mayor to be able to address the councils during the discussion at some point. The terms of this, I think essentially the basic parameter is that Mr. Parr would like the ability to begin the Arbor Ridge development with a two-year window of excise tax relief. So basically, the request is that for a period of two years, any building, any single-family, any residential, I'm sorry, any residential construction that takes place for a period of two years doesn't have to pay excise tax. And there was some confusion last time about the word suspension. And for clarification, the staff report tried to address that. Suspension means that there was no excise tax due or would ever be paid on any building, any construction that takes place in the first two years. So to memorialize that, Patrick's prepared the agreement that's attached to the staff report. There's really just a couple of nuances associated with the language. The first one is that the two-year period starts when the flat for the next phase of the development is filed. So there would be, I assume, a period of time between you and I or when this agreement is enacted, where Mr. Parr is going to be submitting a final flat to the planning commission. He'll be working with his engineers to get public improvement plans done. There's a period of time in there where no building permits will be issued. So the two years will start when he files the final flat and the two years within, two years from that date. There is a grace period at the end of that two years where if he has pulled a building permit for a lot, he has ninety days to start substantial construction on that building. If that time expires, then he's going to have to pay excise tax for it. So there's a little bit of a ninety-day grace period at the end of this. The other provision relating to the agreement is, well, there's actually two others, things that I want to point out. The agreement addresses an existing exemption within our existing excise tax. There's a provision in the tax that allows a developer to apply the amount of excise tax that would be due on the property to improvements that he's required to make on an arterial street that abuts the development. And in fact, the original developer back in two thousand and six took advantage of this because he was required to put in turn lanes on eighty-third street at Valley Spring Drive. And that cost a certain amount of money. He was able to reduce his excise tax by that amount, so he applied directly to. The same would apply if there were no, we don't do this agreement at all. Mr. Parr would enjoy the same exemption because there's another, if you look on the layout of the subdivision, there's another connection to eighty-third street on the east end that's not built yet. The same exemption would apply to that. So any money that he spends constructing turn lanes on eighty-third street, and there you can see the east end of the development, he would be able to apply that toward the excise tax. So in the agreement, paragraph C on item two, second page of the agreement, addresses this. And what it does is allows him to apply excise tax that's due after the two years expires. So excise tax that he would otherwise have to pay, he can apply those money, that amount, to the improvements that he paid for eighty-third street. So presumably, depending on how he wants to phase it, the way it could work is if he does the phase that connects to eighty-third street next, he spends all the money to do the turn lanes on eighty-third street. He's exempted from excise tax for a period of two years. Then after the two years, he could take the money that he spent on eighty-third street and further exempt those excise taxes that would be due on subsequent build. So that's what that paragraph addresses.
Which paragraph is that, Mike?
I'm sorry, Dan?
I lost you on item C.
Yeah. It's actually under the now there for paragraph two, item C. So it's the top of the second page of the agreement. And I'm looking at exhibit C. So exhibit C to the staff report is the agreement that Patrick prepared.
Oh.
Exhibit A is the application. Just a reminder, we're working this under, like we just talked about at the last meeting, this is an economic incentive request. So that's, we have a policy for that. This is the application form. And so this is our consideration of the application of the incentive request. So, yeah, I was talking about the paragraph C on the second page of exhibit C. The only other thing of note that has to do with the legal description on the land that this applies to. Patrick has put at your places revised agreement that strikes the original legal description and references an attachment to the agreement that is a longer legal description than you have at your places. This one includes the currently newly zoned lots that abut Valley Spring Drive at the northeast corner, right abutting eighty-third street. So these lots are currently zoned commercial. And so the excise tax would not apply. The excise tax relief would not apply to any commercial development that happens there. But there's a chance in the next two years that if those were rezoned to a residential zoning, that this agreement would apply to anything that happens on that land as well. So we wanted to make that clear to the vote, to the councils. There were some other minor changes that occurred. And Patrick put a revised redline version of the agreement at your places. I think they're just clarifications. They included the ninety-day period that had been thirty days. There's a ninety-day extension period that we talked about. And the changes to the legal description on the property. Those are the only changes. So with that, unless Patrick has anything to add, I'll stand for any questions.
Just, sorry, my one detail in talking to Don. You know, right now, he simply has an option on the property. So because there's a representation in this agreement that he, or the developer, his company is the sole owner of the property, he will sign this agreement after closing when the property in fact is in the developer's name. Because this agreement, we will record against this property over at Johnson County, recorded deed. So that's why we want that representation in the agreement that this agreement applies to all of that property. So there may be, I think Don said he won't be closing until the end of this month. So it may be a few weeks before this agreement is actually signed by Mr. Parr and his wife. But with that, I think Mike covered everything else.
You probably said, and I didn't catch, the effective, or what, the two-year period begins on the day recording of the first final flat, is that right?
That's right. Or the next, I guess the first one's already made.
Yeah. The first final flat that the DVP plats.
That's right.
Okay.
And then another nuance, the stuff that's already planted, they paid excise tax when it was planted. So those nineteen lots are already paid. The ones that are taken.
Okay. What do you mean?
Well, I think Mr. Parr wants to say.
Want to speak?
Is that all right?
Yep. I just wanted to, I don't like to ask for stuff, so I want to make sure it's clear that I wasn't trying to get too much here. This is just something kind of fun that shows, kind of gives you an idea. I think whenever you get rid of something, you think that the developer is just getting everything. The reality of it is, you know, there's still a lot to pay. The excise tax.
Oops.
I forgot to wipe one. It's going to, it's that, you know, one thing that tips it over to, for me, to make it make sense. But if you look at that, I think you can still see there's still a lot of money that the subdivision, you know, contributes, will contribute to the city of DeSoto. I think the average price, the smallest these lots are, I think you're around fifteen hundred per lot on the excise tax. So kind of put it in perspective of what I'm asking for. You know, obviously, with two hundred lots, that adds up to me a lot. But there's still a lot of money that goes back into the city. Compared to like if you're asking for a tax abatement for years and years, there's still, you get a hundred percent out of all your tax. I still pay for everything, you know, paying for water, all infrastructure, all roads, all side improvements, et cetera. And as I think, I guess, I think most of you know me, but I've been building in DeSoto since nineteen eighty-seven, developing shortly after that, and done a lot of these. And what I've found almost on every one of these subdivisions I've done, except for when things are really busy, there's not a lot of people from outside of DeSoto that will start them. And the problem is, you don't have comps, you know. I've taken builders to this subdivision for over a year. And it's like, well, how many houses in the two-eighty range have sold new homes in DeSoto? And I have to tell them, none. It's like, well, I'm not going to build a spec. And I tell them that's none because there's none available. There's no lots, there's none to sell. But my point there is, at the beginning, it's very, it's hard enough to get builders, once I get them started, the subdivisions go very well. But it's the beginning that's so difficult. And I believe that you have to have some kind of, you have to make it attractive enough at the beginning to get them, you know, to jump in and do it. And every little thing makes a difference. And now, that's on a brand-new subdivision. This subdivision, as we all know, was started in two thousand and six, I think. So it's ten years old. And it has, you know, I'm fighting, you know, it's got Johnson grass, twelve foot tall, and it's, HOA is not active, you know, there's still the main entrance that it doesn't even put in. Which, once again, that's why I was asking for this. This next phase that I do will be the main entrance. And that's going to be expensive. I think that's probably why the original developers chose to go this direction. But when talking to the city, Steve, you know, we really need the second entrance. And it's going to be costly. You have to put in a lift station, get all side improvements. So I'm fighting a very, very, the most costly phase of the subdivision at the same time trying to entice people from, that's not used to us here, to build. And so that doesn't add up. So every little thing that I can do, I got a good price on it, I think, which is very helpful. Good for me, bad for the bank and the developers before. But anytime you're trying to breathe life into something that's already there, every single person, I'm going to have to, you know, say what? They're going to say, well, why, you know, why isn't there new houses? And you've got to try to explain it. Every time I can knock that, those initial prices down a little, at some point, it's too good of a deal if people start buying. Once we start, you know, getting wood going, then I can get this thing moving again. And that's, the two-year window then prevents me from just milking this. I mean, in construction, two years is not very long. I mean, that'll go really quick. So you definitely gave me an incentive to really keep it cranky. It does add up. You know, it's fifteen hundred dollars a lot. Times two hundred lots, you know, it's two hundred fifty thousand. But you can see, that's all that paper was designed to do. We've had, we put in the water pads and the sewer plants, and we're not getting, you know, this will at least start paying some of that stuff off. But hopefully, you know some of the subdivision I've done. And I, only that I can promise that this one will be done right. There will be no, we'll make it a nice addition to DeSoto. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. What, you know, I know this incentive, we haven't done this before, but, you know, and I see why you want it. And, you know, the two-year window, and understand that. And I wanted to know what, and would you be against putting in with your agreement on your, on this agreement here, that after this two-year period, that you would continue building in that area for the next five years? You know, what keeps, you know, I know, I've heard a lot about you. I've heard a lot about your homes, quality homes. And I've heard about you personally. And I know you're a stand-up guy. And what would keep you from maybe at the end of these two years saying, well, I'm just going to sit back now and sell off these lots now, I'm going to quit building, or I'm not going to build? You know, here we have already given you entitlement and everything. Now we're back where we're, where we've lost the taxes. And say you did twenty homes in those two-year period, which is not outlined, you know, be close to maybe, you know, between a hundred and some thousand to two hundred thousand dollars that the city's losing. I'm just wanting to say that to protect the city. And, you know, we're giving here. And I want to know if you're going to give here with something that we can look at and know that this is not going to be a slide-in, and I'm going to do this. And then all of a sudden, at the end of that two-year period, you're going to say, I'm going to slide out now. I'm just going to sell this stuff off now. And I'm not going to build any more homes. I'm done. And I'm on my way. I'll do something else.
I think, and if we're on the same page, that the way it's set up, right now, the excise tax is always, this is how I understand it. So Mike can have to verify this. You know, right now, if this was a brand-new subdivision, I would have to, at the time of final plating, I would have to pay the excise tax for the whole piece. The way all this is doing is saying that I don't have to do that upfront, which still means that the excise tax is due on any lots that don't get built. So you are protected, I believe. And so let's say I develop forty lots and I sell twenty of them and do twenty homes. The twenty lots that are left, you don't, I don't get, after two years, the excise tax will be collected by you. You're not giving that away.
Yeah, but that is in turn now changed at that period of time where that is going to be not at the time of plating, but at the time of building permit.
Right.
And I understand that too.
Okay.
But, you know, still, you can say at that time, after the two-year period, hey, I'm out.
Yep.
You know, and there's nothing in here saying that this is protecting the city too, that, you know, even though you're going to own this property.
Exactly, yeah. That's kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess my, oh, sorry.
You know, and of course, you're not, even if you change the plating, nothing's going to be done or collected because that's not where the excise tax is now. It's not going to be there in two years. It's changing within that two years to be at the time of building permit drawn.
I guess the assurance I could give you on that would simply be that, like, let's say we have the twenty lots left over. Once you develop a lot, it rolls into full tax mode. And for me to just, and I'm buying, to get a good deal, to make this work, I bought everything, you know, I got to buy everything. So the developed lots, you know, would get charged excise tax, I believe, once, after two years, you know, once you, someone wants to build on it. And my incentive not to sit on them is just strictly taxes. It would cost me, I don't, it would be, I'm sure, six, seven hundred bucks a lot to sit on. I would go backwards in a hurry. I would have to get it. Now, on the vacant land, yeah, I could choose to sit on that. But that's really, if I own that, that's going to be, I can't tell you what I'm going to do two years from now because it's toe and market-driven. You know, two thousand and eight, when everything collapsed, I just put everything in mothballs. You know, I was able to, I'm very conservative of these. I don't borrow a lot of money. It's a very, I'm very solid so that I can withstand, you know, ups and downs. And, you know, if the economy's good, it makes sense to keep going. If the economy's bad, it doesn't. But definitely, as far as any lots that are left over, sitting on them would cost me way too much money. I mean, I have, I've had to sit on lots before. You get, it's full rate. That would be the only way I can answer it. I mean, that would, it would make no sense. You sat on it for ten years, you'd lose.
So you'd be against doing anything like that, that I propose for saying that within five years, you're going to keep building?
Yeah.
After the two-year period?
Right.
You have five years to start building.
And only because I just, I've seen what's happened. I mean, if two thousand and eight happened again, I mean, I just, I'd be, I would love to tell you that, but I just, I don't want to tell you something I don't know that I can do. Because I'm conservative when it comes to, I have no problem, you know, tackling something like this. But if the timing's not right, you know, things don't look good, I'm not going to, I can't keep going.
Well, if you wouldn't be acceptable to that, to help the city be protected a little bit more, would you consider instead of two years, do eighteen months?
The-
And then you'd still have that ninety-day extension after that.
Yeah.
Instead of the full two years.
Yep.
And that would be kind of like splitting the difference.
Right.
Since you don't want to add that other end, you don't know what you're going to be doing in two years.
The ninety days, just to be real quick, that's really for, I think, I think that was put in there so that I wouldn't gobble up, you know, sixty building permits.
Whole bunch of permits and the house.
Yeah, the day before, and then I put the houses in. So-
That is a protection for us, so you have the whole fifty permits, the last day of the incentive. And then sit on those for a year and a half.
And the only reason there's ninety days is because of weather. I mean, you might pull a building permit a week before it's up. And then obviously, you know, you get blizzards or whatever. It might be ninety days in construction is nothing. So that's why we did, their middle ninety-day window was put in there. The two years is actually, for me, I know it sounds like a lot of time, but that is like a huge compromise already. I wanted, I wanted a lot more than two years because, I mean, you're talking about a subdivision that's got, you know, four phases. You know, realistically, in DeSoto, if you can get a phase done in a year, you'd be doing really well, you know, you do forty, fifty lots. So, you know, I would like to have, I would have liked to have a lot more time than two years. So a lot of time, you know, before we get to this point, you know, you get, there's already, you know, so quite a few compromises made. So in my mind, the two years is actually already, in construction terms, greatly reduced. Because you've got to remember, that's two years that-
Well, you've got to remember that two years don't start until-
Yeah.
The plating.
But yeah, but then you still got to, you got to put in all the infrastructure, all the roads and everything, then start the house. Well, it takes six months to do, I mean, so, yeah, it's really not very long.
So, you know, that's still ways out.
Yeah, yeah. There's actually, the next phase, the engineering part, is mostly complete. So I should be able to get something back to you guys pretty quick, hopefully for this winter. But, yeah, it's, the two years, yeah, remember, that's from the time you record the plat. That's not from when you start building a house.
Right.
I mean, it might take six months and a bad year just to get the roads in. And then you've got forty lots to do. Yeah, it's not a very long window at all.
What are you anticipating doing a year?
How many homes?
How many homes?
You know, I think so much depends on this first nineteen. It's just so-
So you're going to do a nineteen-lot phase?
No, no, there's nineteen vacant lots left.
Oh, okay.
And I got to get some lumber.
So that'll tell you what your market is going to be.
Yeah. I'm going to go, I would go full steam ahead on getting the next phase approved, getting the engineering done, getting it ready, getting it bid out this winter. And hopefully, I can entice enough guys to get those nineteen going. And it's all going to rely on how much, how well those sell. And I obviously wouldn't be doing this if I didn't think they're going to, it's a good time.
Right.
But to answer, after that point, I just never know. I think it's, you almost have to see how that goes to. But I have no problems going full speed, you know, I mean, if they- full speed, you know, I mean, if, if they would sell, you know...
So you'll be selling the lots and other builders building, or new building numbers?
And, well, just many lots, it'd be both, yeah.
Although it'd be each, because I mean, that might be way too much to get.
Yeah, just by myself, yeah. And, and it's good to have that competition, that variety.
And variety of stock, right?
Yeah, right. You'll bring different things to the table, you know, different builders bring different things here. So, you know, I, I would, I would hope to do, you know, you know, and it would be, it would, I don't think it's unrealistic to, to complete the second phase in a year's time, once the roads and everything are in. So, you know, to, to even be into this, very far into the second phase after two years is probably gonna be tough to do. Honestly.
And then the questions from Dawn?
I guess, just to be clear on, on the handout that you provided, you would anticipate that a single lot would generate twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars in property tax, sales tax, and franchise fees, and, and the excise tax that we're giving up is fifteen-hundred-and-forty dollars roughly. So if we can get a, a house on a lot, we're gonna be seven-hundred dollars ahead as soon as we start, as soon as we get those houses built on each lot.
Yeah, I don't believe, yes, and I, I don't believe there's even, I don't even know when the last house is, I mean, it's, it's just been, I don't know when the last house has even gone in or probably...
I, I don't think we've issued a permit this year. I think it was the last year.
There was one or two.
That argument?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's tough, it's, it's, it's tough to, to convince people why no one else is building and buying it, you know, just, and it's human nature. Once they get some in, get some sold, then that all goes away. But it, it's tough, it's like, you can, you can talk about it, it's not a bad subdivision, I mean, it's not, it's a nice subdivision. But it's gonna be, you know, they've tried, you know, been trying to market this, get rid of it for many, you know, for a long time, and a lot of, a lot of people try. Nothing has stood.
And you said you're, you're thinking of like a two-hundred-and-eighty, three-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, is that...
The target that I'm, I'm the builders, I'm talking to, and what I would do is, at the very low end, probably is more like two-sixty, two-seventy, up to about three-twenty, really about three-eighty, two-eighty to three-twenty. And then on future phases, what I, what I always like to do, DeSoto, you can market to a lot, I think one thing they did wrong was they, they market, you know, it's just two-hundred-and-fifty houses at this little narrow...
Right, right.
You, you should have some estate lots, you should, you know, you should have some cul-de-sacs that have higher restrictions so that you can market to a lot broader, basic people. I think, I think we have our own problem here in DeSoto with, in the future, in that we, we're running out of lots. I mean, we really, Nate Harding has some in the next little, you know, probably in the next block above this, we have some lots out in up country in the next block above that. But once those two are gone, I mean, there's, there's really, there's no other lots. So, so, yeah, I, what I would do is definitely have, not decrisp, increased restrictions from here. And it's easy to do, I did that in like Timber Hills, you got the Timber Hills Estates, you know, so you, you can easily take like a cul-de-sac and, and, you know, where there's twenty homes or something, and up the restrictions. So that you have, you know, the, the homes in there will become, you know, three-twenty to three-eighty, or three-eighty to four-hundred. Because we can sell homes here, there's no problem selling, you know, three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes here, you just have to have the lots available to do that. I don't, I don't believe we have any serious lots right now, where, where a person would wanna put in a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, I believe. So, yeah, this is the, I only intend on going up so that, you know, the tax base on this is that, you know, should only be bigger. It will nev- it won't be this size. There'll, there'll be a lot of houses in two-eighty, three-twenty, but we'll have a lot higher, or will have.
Mayor, if I could just ask one, maybe mostly from Mike, and I don't know if everybody's aware, but, you know, Arbor Ridge, back when it, it, there was a lawsuit and there were a lot of legal things, but Mike, I don't know if you remember, but I, I, and I just bring this up, it may be important for you, Don, but I, I do remember in discussions with Jim Landby, who was involved, I, I don't know how it was resolved, but I remember we had, we were trying to get Mr. Landby to not impose, I think they were, it was part of the Homeowners Association, but deed restrictions where everyone had to use the same set of plans. And I just remember him pushing back that, "No, I don't, I don't wanna let any, you know, it's this, this is what all the Johnson County builders use." And I don't know if that was part of just simply the homeowners association, or if that had, came in with the zoning, or if you remember.
Well, yeah, no, this is a plan development zoning, so there were, there are some architectural standards connected to that, but none of the city approval process included the deed restrictions like you're talking about, that you have to use a certain plan or a certain builder. We had some general architectural standards of, and I think there were just some pictures of similar houses, but there wasn't anything terribly specific on what we had. That's not to say that there isn't a deed restriction filed on the flat that's there now.
Right, that's what I was wondering, maybe something you wanna...
Yeah.
And I did check, yeah, there is one filed.
But I believe, the way I've read it, that I, you know, shouldn't have any problems. It allows you the flexibility to be able to do what I was saying.
Yeah.
I think if you went the other direction, you might get a lot of, start trying to go, you know, less expensive homes existing, I would call it, but I've had, as much as it costs to develop, I wouldn't be ready to go the other direction.
Yeah, if you're, you wanna set the agreement, just need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I think Lana has the original, but if everybody was comfortable, the mayor to sign.
I make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for incentives for the Arbor Ridge development, or DVP LLC, Arbor Ridge Development.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion in a second, need further discussion. Roll call.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried, mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, thanks. Now the hard work.
Yeah, that's all it starts.
It's a lot of red tape, a lot of, a lot of stuff. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up, final form B, discuss visioning process, planning, recreation program, workshop conclusion, and next steps.
Yes, council, I wanted to keep this kind of on the front burner. I think we talked the last time, the last, the final workshop presentation was going to be focused toward Parks Department activities, essentially their programs, the physical, physical parks themselves. And I think we discussed at the last meeting that we, there wouldn't be a big PowerPoint kind of presentation on that, but I did provide some detail about the, the Parks Department itself, it's kind of parks and it's recreation, so it's easy to lump it all together, but you know, the Parks part is, we have four physical parks that the department maintains on a continual basis. A lot of what they do is, is keeping those up to date and able to, you know, able to be used by people who wanna use them. And then the other half is the recreation side, but it's largely the programming of the youth, youth and adult recreation activities, the pool during the summer, and all the stuff that the Parks Department is in charge of putting on. I asked Jay, and actually this is mostly Justin, exhibit A to the staff report is a summary of the recreation programs and the participation they get. So a lot of what they do is the youth sports, soccer, baseball, softball, T-ball. We've included some participation numbers on there. We also have the indoor fitness, the yoga, zumba, trifecta, that stuff takes place down here in the fitness room, right below us, we hear the music sometimes, and they get going too loud or too late. We also have aquatic center swim lessons, and then adult sports, volleyball, pickleball, and those activities. So let's just a quick summary, I didn't intend to go through the line items on that as far as the Parks Department goes. I know there's been some discussion about a desire to have a more formal park board involvement with, with planning future park improvements. I haven't heard a desire to extend that into the activities, the recreation side, but I know that, you know, the function of the park board has evolved over time. You know, historically, it was a very involved volunteer effort that would go out and do park improvements, and that morphed into more of a recommending board to recommend public capital projects for, for parks. And then more recently, that's kind of tailed off and there haven't really been a formal, there hasn't been much of a formal role in our, in our parks planning for that. I know that's a topic of discussion. So I, again, intend to address a whole lot more on the parks programs other than just that. The next thing in the staff report is some workshop conclusions, and I've got a list of ten items here that in my mind came up as, as stuff to just mark down for future further consideration as we go forward toward joint meetings with our partners and toward the goal-setting and visioning process. These are follow-up items and they relate that kind of all the stuff from the workshops that we've talked about. And these are really not in any particular order, but the follow-up items include EDC discussions with the EDC and Chamber, the joint meetings, and just how the, the council interacts with those boards and what we can do to better work together and just, just be a more, just a more integrated team there. Second one is comprehensive plan update, we've talked about updating future land use designations, both in this room and then also with the EDC side, side of it. We haven't really looked at a comprehensive view of the overall future land use map, really in probably at least ten years. We've looked at a couple of area plans, but there hasn't been much work done on that. Third item is a city hall facility plan, and we've talked about this in terms of your specific requests that we get from time to time, and, and individual ideas about what's to take place and what could happen in certain areas of the building. I think we've, we've talked about coming up with more of a comprehensive policy statement on some of those things, both with future improvements, what we think should happen in terms of physical, ongoing maintenance of the building, but then also in terms of programming and policies relating to public use of the facility. And we need to work those in with the park programs, things that we've talked about before in terms of gym, gym rental and renting other community centers. So there's, there's some things that are kind of up in the air and, and people sort of wanting answers and deserving answers, and it'd be easier in the context of an overall policy to be able to give them some answers. The fourth item is a wage and compensation study for city employees. I think we talked briefly about that, it's, it's kind of a goal of mine, I think, that would help us internally. Fifth thing would be the park board structure that we talked about just a little bit ago. Sixth thing is a parks master plan update. This'll be something we talk about in terms of how to spend our capital improvement funds for next year. Seventh is a water sales and territory agreement with Rule Six or Rule Seven. We, we know that the Rule Seven has essentially taken over Rule Six, and there's an opportunity, I think, for some discussion there. We've heard also about emergency planning, disaster planning, Danny, I think you brought this up probably a year ago, maybe even more. Chief Wim is very supportive of sitting down and having a discussion like this. The next thing, item number nine is broadband, we have a committee going right now to try and address that, and I owe that committee an update on some of the activities that I've had lately. Just, we just have areas of the city that are underserved or not served with broadband, and we think that's important from, from an economic development part, but also from a quality of life standpoint, that we do what we can to get everybody in town connected. Then the last thing on the list here is, really has to do with Riverfest Park, but the Scale House is something that we've talked about before, we got pretty involved in trying to come up with solutions there, and seems like it's just kind of, it's sitting there for a while in discussions, so we need to get back to that. And I've got some blank lines in case anybody has any, any other, just kind of things that we don't have to solve them tonight, but we're not gonna get around to them unless we get them on the list. So if anybody has any, any other items that we'd like to follow up on, that seem like important enough to get on the list, and we can put it here. The one thing I did, I do need your feedback on, is the next steps. The next phase is we meet with our partners. The first one would be the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals. That would be, that's kind of on our list, on the last page of the staff report, joint meeting docket. These joint meetings occur from November through February, and that seems like a real long time to have some joint meetings, but we're dealing with groups of people, that's, everybody knows the challenges of scheduling joint meetings. And then we're also dealing with the Christmas holidays and people being out of town and not really, not, not as engaged as they might be in other times of the year. So I've laid out kind of a docket here for those meetings, the first one being with the planning commission and BZA. And as luck would have it, we have a planning commission next, meeting next Tuesday, and we have a board of zoning appeals meeting the next night on Wednesday, so I'll be able to talk with both of those groups and hopefully set up that joint meeting. And our window for that is really kind of the first couple of weeks in November. So I'd like to get your opinions on when that meeting, maybe a couple of dates in those first couple of weeks.
Did you want us to add, we had something for that list, did you want those now?
Yeah, let's have it now, sure, yeah. So those are the first two things, you know, the list and then the meetings. So, yeah, let's, let's dive into that.
Well, I have a couple, I'd like to see something done on, say, number eleven, they get the pool house down there, change it over to bathroom facilities down there in Miller Park. And the other thing, I'm still thinking, all of a sudden, I'm thinking about Lori, and take a long-range plan for the parks to be connected by trails. And that's something that Lori, I know she brought this up at a couple of the meetings we had, and I think that should be down there on eleven to, I mean, eleven, uh, twelve or something, and that needs to be looked into and discussed too, I mean, as for long-range plans. But that's the only thing that I had that I wanted to see on the list.
Those would kind of follow into the park, park master plan and kind of...
Yeah, the trail system really would be put in there.
Um, how about the downtown? Are they called downtown area? Downtown area?
Okay.
Whether we wanna...
Revitalization?
Revitalization program and just, you know, come to terms, yea or nay, or what we're gonna do with that before we have somebody come back again asking for help and kind of know what, what we wanna do with anything, it may be, you know, we need a policy.
So you're talking about in terms of incentive policies?
Right.
Yeah.
More than planning, planning the streetscape?
Yeah, not planning the street, yeah, just more incentives and what we can, what we will or will not do to help somebody who is going to do something out there, not the city itself putting in money.
That seems like a good opportunity for some more of those, you know, incentives and our policy, the...
Right.
Transfer, neighborhood improvement district, that sort of.
We can come up with some good ideas, I mean, what we came up with was, you know, doable.
Great.
While we're kind of thinking on that, I wanna mention, my last, my son graduated from DeSoto High School in two thousand and nine, and since that time, I have been to the school maybe twice, found my way to the new volleyball place to watch volleyball game. But you've probably been there, but the Rotary Club, Mike and I just did a tour of the high school and all of the improvements. And I am telling you...
of the high school and all of the improvements. And I am telling you that we, as a city, need to recognize that we don't just have a good school district. We have an awesome, awesome high school. And if you guys, if it, if you haven't been in it to tour that whole thing and find out what is there, it's hard to sell our city when you haven't been in to see that because the high school, the school is a big thing. We talked about that with the economic development a lot. But I would encourage either to get set up with Steve Dagan to give this council a tour or individually do it because I think you guys will be overwhelmed. Am I not right, Mike? You, it's, it's like Ike walked away from there going, this is an economic development tool. This is big. They have a special room just to practice baseball and softball throwing in. I mean, it's like their weight room and their bicycle and exercise rooms. Oh, God, it is amazing. So...
We have, you know, the, the school board is going through a visioning process similar to we are right now, and I've reached out to Alvy to see if we can, you know, for our joint meeting, kind of piggyback on something that they're doing, and I'm waiting to hear back from him. So, you know, I'll mention, I'll mention that to you.
And I think the superintendent has bought in DeSoto, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, he lives out in...
And so, you know, that's a big thing, you know. I think that's really important.
The other thing I was going to mention is, last week we had our good governance, the first good governance meeting, and Frank Harwood was at that meeting, and he, he says for that group, for the next meeting, which actually won't happen in January, but for the next meeting, he's suggesting that that group meet out of the high school and do that tour. You're talking about, so, so those are two good opportunities to do that.
But I just wanted to throw that in just because I know you're going to meet with the school and that you are starting to do that, and it's something that, you know, I think we need to really remember our school district.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
It's part of our...
Sure. Yeah, I'll, we'll see if we can make that happen with our joint meeting.
Yeah. Did you have some more?
No, I, I like the ones that we talked about. Definitely the park master plan and doing something like, getting some amenities down Riverfest sometime. The old pool ideas are very good when you have something usable down there and maybe some parking in that open section of the pool.
Yeah, that's, that's been the capital improvement project on the list for a while.
Nope. The trails, yes.
All of my city envisioning things are packed away somewhere, so I kind of have a hard time going and finding all my notes. I'll throw in if I can.
Okay. All right, good.
Most of what we do or talk about is somewhere in this list or, you know, you know, we can, we can tag it into one of the topics that we've got.
Yeah, right, right. It's not like there's not enough. We're not looking to fill the time. I just wanted to, you know, give an opportunity if I've missed something big, and maybe we all have missed something big.
Yeah, this is just a big thing that you missed.
Yeah. Okay, well, if everybody's comfortable with that moving forward, let's talk about then the joint meeting schedule for the plan commission. I'm thinking October thirty first is, how long do you think that's?
Monday.
Monday, yeah. Isn't that great for this year? I'm guessing we're not going to be meeting on October thirty first. A lot of times what works really well are the off Thursdays, the Thursday that we don't have meetings. So for November, that'd be the, well, I guess the, the tenth.
Because the last one would be Thanksgiving, so that would probably be the better one up there.
Yeah, we're going to do it, that's good. So what, what does everybody think? I guess, you know, it's not like we can't, we have to be Thursday. So the first couple of weeks there in November, that, first and fourth, I'm assuming we don't want Friday.
I like the tenth.
I think the tenth is the best. That's the earliest time in November we probably would be able to do it.
Is November tenth okay with everybody else?
Open in my calendar.
Good. And Lori, six o'clock's too soon for you, right? And seven work?
Six fifteen.
Is there a desire to move it up a little? Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay. So that first joint meeting with the planning commission, BZA, November tenth, six thirty, also in doubt of meeting invitation to everybody on that list. Any particular topics you want to cover? Haven't really set the agendas. Anybody have any ideas about the types of things you want to, want to discuss? I think the first goal is to get everybody in the same room. When you don't, when you don't really meet too often, it's, it's easy to kind of lose touch with one another. And I'll probably go over with the planning commission, you know, at our meeting the next week, and we have, we've, we've discussed the visioning process. They're aware of what's happening, and I gave them a little bit of a, of a summary of that, the first workshop that we had here about roles, the roles of the different boards, and so concentrate on the planning commission. So they, they've heard some of that. So I was thinking to kind of reiterate that, introduce ourselves, and just talk about, you know, the plan commission, if they have the future land use plan, the comprehensive planning is in their purview. Maybe we could focus on those things. If there's anything that you guys want to specifically talk about, just let me know. I'll send out the meeting reminder, and then I'll remind you if you have anything you want to talk about.
Did you want us to add a December one also already?
Well, the other thing I was going to mention is the, the, the follow-up meeting would be with the Economic Development Council, and I've got that scheduled for the last half of November. The last half of November gets pretty tricky. Yeah, if you want to let me know, you know, that the week of the fourteenth is, that's a regular work week, then the following day is Thanksgiving. So it'd almost have to happen on that week of the fourteenth. We have a meeting on the tenth. And the seventeenth is council night, so we'd be probably looking at the fifteenth or the sixteenth, doing Tuesday or Wednesday. Are there any preferences on those?
I have to check on that one. You said the tenth?
Well, the tenth we were already set.
That's where we set the plan commission and the BZA.
And so the next, the next board would be the Economic Development Council.
I think Linda and I would both be gone the tenth. I'll check.
Okay.
No, it's the sixteenth you're on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just got information.
You're, you're here, the tenth is good for you guys.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, tenth is good.
And then the next week, the next week, is there a day that, the sixteenth you cannot?
No, sixteenth I'm gone.
How about the fifteenth, the Tuesday, the fifteenth?
I can't do the fifteenth.
Okay.
I, I, I should be good on the fifteenth.
Okay. Rick Camp, do the fifteenth.
Fourteenth is municipal court. We could, we could arrange to meet in senior centers somewhere else at the fourteenth quarters.
The fourteenth is Monday.
Well, it's the EDC we meet in the chamber room and pull a few extra chairs in.
Yeah, the four, yeah, let's not let the court...
I'm okay, fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Nobody answer tasks on the fourteenth.
You get on the fourteenth.
I think whatever day we pick, we'll want beer.
Great. Mike, how about you?
I'm looking. Yeah, I think, yeah, we're...
Monday. So fourteen for the EDC.
All right, so, um, whose idea was?
Whose idea was obvious, the...
Yeah.
Um, just put more session.
Yeah. Okay.
What time? Six thirty again?
Yeah, that's, let's make it simple so I don't, make it simple for me.
And that was when?
November fourteenth, that's on Monday.
And the chamber office, correct?
Yeah, those courts should be up here.
Now my calendar has lots of green dots.
Now you feel important?
Yeah.
Yeah. If everybody has that on their calendars, the last thing I wanted to talk about is the citizens as partners meetings. We, we've decided to add that as an element to, is everything okay?
Yeah, I just forgot to bring my list of names.
Oh, that's, I have a list. I did, and I sent an email out just to, to department heads here at city hall and just asked for a list of, because when we talk about citizens as partners, that'll be a facilitated session, two meetings. The thought is that that'll be, maybe it's two meetings on the same day, one in the afternoon, one in the evening. But in order to get better participation, we send out individual invitations to members of the community. And so what I asked for was if you could think of just names. Initially, I think we were looking for twenty to forty. I don't know if we're necessarily restricted by a number. I, as a result of sending an email out to staff and just asking around city hall, we've got, I think, about fifty-two names on here. I'll just hand this out. These names are in alphabetical order based on the first name, so no particular order. Okay, I'll have to record.
I will. Thank you guys.
Yeah, sure. Here's a list of names that, that we came up with here at city hall. This doesn't include any of the boards, you know, so it doesn't necessarily include the planning commission or the BZA or the EDC, those boards, because we're going to be meeting separately with those folks too. So there's, I think there's about fifty or so names on here. If, if, if you had, see anybody, if you know of anybody that's not on here that you want to include, I think we can go ahead and include them. I really don't see any need or there's no benefit to try and whittle this down to a certain number. I think, you know, the more the better. You send out personal invitations to fifty people, I don't know what the success rate is there. I try to pick people who are more likely than not to want to be involved in something like this. And some of these names, I don't, you know, they came from other folks. I'm not familiar with some of these people on this. But I don't think we'll have trouble accommodating if more people show up. So if you have any additions to this, let me know, and I'll get them on the list.
Diana Laverde? Diana Laverde, would you please?
And how about Mary?
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm sure I got more on that. Look at my list of these things.
Okay.
Yeah, Macy, Jeanie Macy.
Judy.
Valerie, Valerie Lehman, who was the, who was in Galveston, Galveston, into the Valerie Lehman, LAH, I mean, so she's not...
She's the one involved, she involved with the plannings of the lies.
Yeah, well, yeah, she came and talked to her mates and my mates for us.
Yeah. Good.
I probably have some more to add. I think that our, all these topics.
Shoot me, shoot me an email.
I will.
Yeah. Okay, good. Yeah, that was all, that was all from me on that issue.
I was expecting a long presentation, Mike.
Well, it turned out longer than I thought. We lost Patrick.
Moving on. Glad you were here. Anything else to add?
Yes, I do. Quickly, remember we talked about Kathy Ross needing to use this room for the historical society presentation? She, that was originally going to be on the twenty-sixth of, of October. She wants to move that to the thirtieth of November. I didn't think that poses anybody any problems. I'm just letting you know that this room will be used for that purpose on November thirty. The other thing I had for you are our salt storage facility has been moved. We're nearing completion on that, the pads. Yeah, it looks good. The asphalt's down. The block walls are, the structure of the cover is up. That facility, I think we bought the salt facility, it's minute seven here, I think, and those covers last about five. So we knew moving it that we're going to need a new cover. And the manufacturer of the facility has given us a bid on the cover, Heartland Structures, of fifteen, fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. That had come out of the street department's building maintenance fund, funding money in that budget. Yeah, we, we kind of do have to have it. So if I could get your approval to spend that with Heartland Services, very good motion.
I move that we authorize the city administrator to spend fifteen thousand, some odd dollars for a cover for the salt facility.
I second that. From motion and second to spend fifteen thousand. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Let me pick up a roll call here, please.
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Great, thank you. That was the last item. I did have a budget projection. I put a memo in your, in your packet about the third quarter budget projections. They're looking very good, yeah. And actually, I, I, I did identify where expenditures are down as a result, I think of concerted effort on everybody's part. Sales tax is up eight percent from last year. That's a big, a big benefit. Sales tax is a pretty big part of our revenue. But then also, we got ninety-one thousand dollars in excise tax from, from Merck. So that's a big chunk of, of the rosy year picture. So look through that. This is a report I think you made. I'm not sure. I think you got this report historically, maybe monthly you get this report. So I'm going to continue to provide that. And then the other thing where Bonnie and I are working on are those five-year projections. That used to be, when Pat was here, that'd be bound with your budget book, kind of a five-year projection. So that's, that's our goal, to get those updated for your budget book. When we, when we print those, that would be probably sometime in December, you'll get those for the two thousand seventeen budget. And that was it from me.
I know.
I have nothing, thank you.
Let's start with council. Danny?
You didn't talk about this?
Yeah. Well, I...
Yeah, I should have better say something about that.
All right, all I'm going to say is that I greatly appreciate the council and the city administrator supporting me in this next endeavor, and I'll do my best to put DeSoto on the real map if I'm elected. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, man, it seems everywhere.
I appreciate it in speaking with each one of you about it. You made me feel really good and appreciate the work that I do here, and so I hope in some way I can get back to my hometown folks and you as the council members for supporting me. Thank you.
Yeah, is there, how we doing on the sheriff's office or getting in here on their room?
Yeah, they, Jay's been working with them on phone and access. They're, you know, they want to move within the next, within the next month. Yeah.
And the only other thing I know, I, have we got the situation taken care of on the gazebo down at Miller Park where they were trying to figure out the hail damage to that and whether or not they're going to be able to, I noticed the roof being looking kind of bad.
Yeah. The, with all of the hail damage sort of insurance negotiations that are, are, now they're wrapping up. It's pretty early, early on, Pat, we asked on the, the gazebo roof. It'll be replaced. It's just a matter of... Uh, it's just a matter of, of getting some bids in for that and doing it, so they've agreed to pay for it.
Oh, okay, okay.
The insurance will pay for it. Uh, the other thing we're trying to get done before the end of the year is all of the asphalt roofs on all the buildings and mostly out back here by the pool, uh, they've agreed to pay for those, and so, uh, we need to take, because it's going to be a big dollar item, we need to get a bid package together and get bids on those, so Jay's working on, on getting that together, getting those bids. So we're trying to get those replaced before the end of the year. We also have, I think we're close to a resolution on, um, the compensation for hail damage to this build, uh, in relation to dents in the metal roof, in relation to possible service life reduction in the membrane system of this roof. That's been a process that we've, uh, been working on really hard for the last seven months. Um, then there's all, also the facet of the vehicle damage. Um, every, almost every vehicle we have has, had damage. Um, some of those vehicles, we've made, about half of them, we've made the decision not to repair the damage, just to take the insurance check, and then the other half we're going to go ahead and repair. And the dividing line was, you know, how old is the thing? Um, is it worth repairing? Uh, you know, is it still functional? Does it need to look good? So, like, the fusion, the sedan, really took some heavy damage, do you think it's important to fix that so it doesn't do a radical damage car? So, um, so, and some of the newer vehicles we're having fixed. So what, we'll combine all that information for you, give, just give you a report on, on what, what was concluded on all the hail situation. I know, you know, it happened back in April, and we've just been, we've been agonizing, trying to come to, come to a resolution on that. Yeah, um, you know, in the end, I think we, we know, we're, we're a member of a self-insured pool, right? So we're kind of insuring ourselves, and the pool consists of other public entities, uh, school districts and counties and cities in the region, and, um, in the end, you know, from, just from a fairness standpoint, we don't think it's fair to try and get one over on the insurance company, and they don't have any motivation to try and get one over on us, so, you know, I think working through that is, uh, is what's taking some time. So we'll have, we'll have that report for the next couple of days.
I understand.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Lori?
Um...
Actually, I'll really note down somewhere. Nope. Oh, EDC annual meeting. There we go. We're not going to do a table, right? Um, is, are you going to go, Mike?
Yeah, I plan on going. That's the one up at, up Bartle Hall?
I think it's at Bartle.
They do a nice video, and, yeah, I plan on going. I saw your email, did Sarah?
She responded. They're not, I don't think they're planning to, uh, buy a table this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, KCADC meeting, uh, the annual meeting of the KCADC. Um, would you buy two tickets? Would you buy?
Sure.
I'd like to go.
Yeah.
It's probably easier.
Lana, do you ever go to that?
I haven't been invited before.
I'll coordinate that with Sarah.
Okay. And then some of the sessions at the, uh, meetings, um, one of them was, uh, we were in both, right? The tower, cell tower law, or, at some point we probably have to discuss if we need to go through any of our ordinances and...
Yeah, it's looking like, looking like we do. I don't know if we've told you, it seemed like the day after that legislation was passed up at the state, we got an application for a cell tower in the Eighty-Seven Street right away out by Timber Trails.
See?
Right. I mean, really, it was in, and, uh, but, but that consultant is, is coming, that would, that would, me and Patrick can, uh, kind of explain if they're going to, understands that they shotguned applications out to, like, all, all these cities, and, and so they understand we, the law didn't take effect until the first year, um, and, uh, all right, so, yeah, we're working through that.
That's it.
Lori?
I heard Ronnie talk before the meeting about the water traffic.
Yeah.
All right, well, I don't have anything.
Why would we adjourn that, yeah?
I'll second.
Motion made, second. All the papers say on.
I...
All, on. Uh... Rick?
Second, I vote.
Who are you?